Great. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. Welcome to the June 17th City Council Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start by asking us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Ms. Moe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have an invocation, so everyone will be seated. All right. 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda.
The agenda was posted on Thursday, June 13th at 4:11 PM.
And go ahead with your call.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Armandares.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Mayor Blankley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, under Orders of the Day, we have none. Under Employee Introductions, we have two departments. We'll start with Community Development and Sharon Goy.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the community. I'm happy to first introduce... Happy to first introduce our new office assistant, Desiree DeLeon. Desiree started her career...
Thank you.
Desiree started her career in the banking industry, gaining valuable experience in customer service. Several years ago, she made a transition to the education sector. She worked with elementary, middle, and high school students as an instructional aide. Just prior to joining the city of Gilroy, she was working at Burton Middle School in Morgan Hill as an assistant in the wellness center. So, we're really delighted to have Desiree on board, so please join me in welcoming her.
I'm really happy to be here and excited to work together to support the community.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And a second one, yes?
Yes, second one. That's our new inspector, Alex Meza. Alex's passion for carpentry began during vocational school, where he excelled in his carpentry class and graduated at the top of his class. So, as a result of that, he got to work on some really significant commercial projects, such as Levi Stadium, Google, and Apple Park. In 2023, he obtained his residential building inspector certification and transitioned to working as a contract building inspector. And since then, he has also obtained his mechanical residential building inspection certificate. So, outside of work, Alex likes playing disc golf and spending time with his family and his three kids. Please join me in extending a warm welcome to Alex.
I'm glad to be here, excited to be able to work with HIPPO and the other inspectors and learn from them. Thank you for having me.
Welcome. Welcome to Gilroy. Okay, it's always fun. All right, under Ceremonial Items, we don't have any tonight, and under Council Correspondence, we also don't have any. Presentations to the council, though, we do have a presentation from Alex, a different Alex, Alexandra from SV Creates on the interim report on the Elevate Gilroy Through the Arts Grant Program. Alexandra, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you. Well, I'm Alexandra Ranowski, CEO of SV Creates. There, okay. Let's have to lean forward a little. I'm really happy to be with you here tonight to thank you all for your support of the arts in Gilroy and also to give you a report on the first year, pilot year, of the Elevate Gilroy Through the Arts Program, which your support helped make possible last year. So, as you can read in the full written report in your packet, I'm not sure if any of you have had a chance to look at it yet, SV Creates was able to leverage the $25,000 commitment from the city of Gilroy to run a competitive open grant cycle and award just over $78,000 in grants to six projects in Gilroy. That $78,000 was further leveraged by the artists and arts organizations that executed the projects to raise more than double that in cash and in-kind support, in addition to securing hundreds of volunteer hours. So, one of the objectives was to leverage additional funding. I think we met that one and really happy with that. We believe the projects funded in the first year more than succeeded in meeting the objectives for the pilot phase of the Elevate program. These objectives, as outlined in our original proposal to you over a year ago, were to support the creation and preservation of culturally relevant artistic work, to raise the visibility and voice of local artists, to engage the community and activate public spaces through the arts, to catalyze capacity and resiliency in our historically under-resourced arts ecosystem, and to encourage and leverage other funding for the arts in Gilroy. While you can read more about each of these projects in the report, and I'm sure many of you attended at least a few of them, hopefully most, I want to highlight a few examples of the ways the projects and, in fact, the entire grant process met those objectives. First, the application process itself included significant outreach in the local community to engage local artists, residents, and local businesses to consider forming partnerships and develop projects for which to apply. Then SV Creates provided hands-on, customized application support and project development support to help potential applicants design strong projects and draft compelling applications. And the grant review process engaged additional local residents on the grant review panel. So, we engaged the community, catalyzed capacity, and raised visibility. The projects themselves activated public spaces and rallied support. They're detailed and listed in your report, but just as we witnessed at the La Frontera Festival and the Veterans Memorial mural opening, lots of activation and public support. They supported presentation of culturally relevant work, such as exhibitions celebrating Latinx culture at Gallery 1202. They raised the visibility of local artists at events like the Chalk Festival and others, and built resilience in the local arts community by encouraging partnerships between businesses, artists, and arts organizations. There is one final project of the program for this year, which is still in process, and that is the Railroad Alley Capos mural, a complex project that's taken all year, which is bringing together local artists, community members, and businesses, and it will be completed later this summer. So, that was that year. The second year of the Elevate program is now in process. The application cycle closed last week. A panel will meet in July, and grant awards will be announced before August. A really exciting thing that's just happened this month, in addition to funding from the Packard Foundation, general funding from the County of Santa Clara, and your funding from the city of Gilroy, this year, because of the demonstrated success of the first year projects, we have received an additional commitment from the Office of Supervisor Arenas for District One inventory funding specifically for this program. So, hopefully, you will thank the supervisor when next you see her for joining you in this. I want to thank you all again for your partnership in this project. We're looking forward to continuing the work, and I think there's maybe a minute or two, Mayor, for a question, if anybody has any.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, councilmembers, any questions?
Yeah, how many applicants?
There's one question.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I get excited.
We had, I believe, 14 applicants in the first year, and we were able to fund with the funds six of those projects.
And this year?
This year, I think we have 12.
Okay.
And we will see, depending on how much they ask for, we'll determine exactly how many we are able to fund.
Pretty consistent numbers, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Exciting. Thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
If no one else, I just have one on the budget. So, the one-year budget is in the packet, and great. The second year, city of Gilroy's amount is the same, right? County of Santa Clara went from 15 to 10, so is that without the additional money that you just said?
That is correct. It was out. We didn't know at the time we did the report that we were going to see that disco. So, that will mean we can give some additional funds in addition to the 70 that stated there we'll be able to give additional grant funds.
Okay, yeah, and it, right.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And it'll come from the counties.
Yes, from the county, from the additional county money.
Wonderful, that's awesome. Okay, thanks, Alexandra.
Thank you all, thanks for the time tonight.
All right, yay. Okay, this is 4.2 now, public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. And I am not there on my screen to know how many speakers we have. I see two, is that right? Okay, John Daly, followed by Robert Z. Zapata. Okay, John?
Yeah. Takes me a little while.
So, hopefully, you can see the timer on the screen there.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate whoever was responsible for all the repaving of all the streets. It looked a lot nicer, all except Wren Avenue. I don't know why they didn't do the midlane. But the reason I came tonight was because I'm interested in the article that was printed in this Gilroy-Morgan Hill paper talking about the quarter percent tax. And it raises a lot of questions. First of all, I wouldn't object to a quarter percent sales tax. I would object to anything that goes on the property tax, bonds or anything that had to be paid off, property tax. I don't believe in that. But what I wanted to know was, on our... The mayor says that all these new houses that have been built, there's no money comes with it, a little bit of property tax. How does the property tax get to the county and the state? What's the formula that we get the money back from the state, wherever it ends up?
So, we can't do a back-and-forth conversation, but what you are asking is on our agenda tonight. So, if you'd like to wait and speak then, I think our city clerk thought that you were questioning something that the writer of the article wrote. And so, she put you in this section, but if you want to wait till we... This item is on our agenda, which means you can speak to it when we get to that item, and we can then discuss it.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can't discuss.
Well, then, the last question I'll say then is it says they're making long-term plans. Have they bought or have they, you know, come up with the property where they can build substations? Have we thought about that? You know, because it's growing, all of the land's being gobbled up, the longer we wait to buy it, the more it's going to cost. And then, one last thing I'll say then, is I was wondering why they... Maybe they could build a... When they build the substations or the new fire stations, if they could combine them in a building somewhere or other. But since we can't do back-and-forth, well, I'll take my seat and listen to the rest. But I did have concerns about why property tax should go to... Should stay here, pay for all the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Zapata?
Well, that wasn't worth it.
It will be if you wait till we get to the agenda item.
I kind of wanted to add a little bit more, but I'll consider mine a public comment because I will get a little off-topic. But yeah, no, I noticed too that it's on the agenda, 9.1. But I wanted to go a little more further than that, and I've been here before talking about, you know, taxes, and I'm not an accountant or anything like that, but I do realize that when you're getting robbed, it's not nice. And so, I would agree, yeah, why can't, you know, the money that's collected be kept locally? Instead, it's going to the state, and then the state, I don't know what it does to it. Like I said, we're in a multi-billion dollar deficit, so obviously, they're not using it wisely. And then, there's the federal government, but that's a whole different, you know, topic. But I do want to emphasize that, you know, why pay taxes? Why give all of our hard-earned dollars and cents to these... To foreigners, to foreign wars, to individuals that do not care about Americans, that do not care about the average carpenter, the average electrician, the average police officer, the average teacher in America? You know, I'm American-first, and that shouldn't... I don't know why some people say, "That's racist." That's... It's not, you know? I want to have a family. I want to be able to get married. I'm not married. I want to be able to enjoy and prosper in the future and have a healthy life in the future, grow old, see my grandkids, all that fun stuff. So, that's why I encourage to end the Fed. The Federal Reserve that prints, you know, how much they want whenever they want, it's backed by nothing. I don't know if people pay attention to Saudi Arabia just canceled, you know, being the reserve for the petrodollar, quote-unquote. So, now our dollar is officially backed by nothing. So, when it all goes to sham, you go to war, and, you know, it's just horrible. And then, yeah, I agree, why have a property tax? Why have an income tax? And why have the IRS when the IRS is just there to collect from, you know, average workers? You know, they don't even go after billionaires. But yeah, that's all I wanted to say. I might not stay for the 9.1, but I will actually... I'll look at it on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay, then that brings us to item five, which is reports of councilmembers. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, I want to thank the Friends of the Gilroy Library for their $20,000 donation. And I also want to let the community know that Saturday, June 22nd, at 11:00 AM, we'll be dedicating the Donald Elvis Priono Park in downtown Gilroy. Thank you.
All right, councilmember Armandares?
Sure. I... As an alternate, I sat in on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy meeting, and a couple things from that meeting I think are important. So, in anticipation of PG&E rate changes expected in July, the Clean Energy Board of Directors voted to maintain its 4% discount on electricity generation compared to PG&E. So, this will save the average SV, Silicon Valley Clean Energy customer approximately $42 annually in electricity generation costs. The additional discount for income-qualified care customers continues to be distributed to 27,500 customers in our area in the form of bill credits, which are dispersed throughout the year, and that will total approximately $150 per customer. The other thing is that the current energy market conditions have required Silicon Valley Clean Energy to adjust its clean power target. Without losing sight of its long-term goals, Silicon Valley Clean Energy has achieved a 100% clean power supply since 2070. But due to, like I said, energy market conditions, the board now had to direct the staff to, at a minimum, maintain its current 2025 position of 80% carbon-free, but that staff should still try to meet a short-term target of 85% to 90% clean. So, this includes a director to procure nuclear, carbon-free attributes if available. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, VTA continues to have... To be doing outreach to member agencies who have the power to improve travel speed, reliability, and overall appeal of public transit by adopting transit signal priority policies that prioritize transit at intersections along VTA's frequent network routes and Gilroy's VTA Frequent 68 Route along the Monterey Corridor. This will help especially in the sections where the roadway is reduced from four lanes to two lanes through our downtown. There are upcoming opportunities to secure federal, state, and regional funding for signal upgrades and deployment if the county can show evidence of multi-jurisdictional commitment to prioritize transit. VTA plans to pursue 15 million of Stage 2 smartphones for the further implementation of transit signal priority. The effectiveness of this in securing more funding to implement it countywide will depend on local jurisdictions' adoption of transit signal priority policies. Presently, cities are enacting goals to reduce climate change from vehicle emissions, decrease vehicle miles traveled, and improve equitable outcomes so everyone in Santa Clara County can thrive. They are also planning how to accommodate increased travel demand from anticipated growth and take advantage of other transit benefits, such as affordability, maximizing road space, and taking polluting cars off the road. One of the most effective strategies to meeting these goals is to get more people out of their vehicles and on a public transit. To make this strategy effective, transit must be fast and convenient. Cities can help improve transit in their community by adopting policies that control the factors that determine the quality and quantity of transit service: street space allocation, signal timing, and signal priority. Giving priority to public transit in the form of transit lanes or preferential signal timing speeds up transit and makes it more desirable for potential riders and helps cities keep... Meet their climate goal changes. Maintaining the status quo endorses the current outcomes. Making no changes to transportation or land use policies will likely result in slower transit as congestion increases on our city streets. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, do a shout-out to the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce for a great car show in downtown Gilroy this Saturday with all the volunteers, the board, everyone that worked at this. It was a great event, and a lot of people showed up, so just wanted to do a shout-out there. I also have a report from SVRIA, a report on the drill, I should say, SVRIA, report on a drill in Gilroy and Morgan Hill. On May 23rd, 2024, the Silicon Valley Regional Authority, in partnership with three of our member agencies, the cities of Gilroy, Morgan Hill, and Santa Clara County, participated in the first region-wide radio drill. The drill placed the radio system in the area called the South Cell into one of its redundant features. This drill aimed to familiarize and normalize the dispatchers and field personnel with these safety net radio technology features. These robust and redundant radio features designed to ensure the radio system's continuous operation during a large winter storm, wildfire, earthquake, or technology failure that impacts one or more of SVRIA's 31 radio sites were safely... Were put to the test. The drill required dispatchers and field staff to recognize the safety features and respond accordingly. This included radio and 911 dispatch center console alert tones and visual warnings. The drill also evaluated the programming accuracy of the radios, a crucial aspect of their effective functioning. The system, as expected, remained operational, providing a sense of security and confidence in its reliability during these events. In addition to 911 dispatch, law and fire staff, SVRIA board members Tom Klein, Gilroy City Councilmember, and Board Chair Russ Mountain, Sunnyvale City Councilmember, attended the drill. They were present in the Gilroy Police Department's 911 dispatch center. In addition, dispatch staff from other 911 centers in the county attended to watch the process and procedures. The drill was a success and, more importantly, uneventful. This is a testament to the dedication and preparedness of agency staff. Dispatchers and field personnel responded as they were trained, and the radios responded as they were programmed to do. SVRIA appreciates the leadership of Gilroy Police Chief Espinosa and Morgan Hill Police Chief Paulsgrove, whose support was instrumental in the success of this drill. These were the first two agencies to conduct the drill in the county, setting as high standard for future drills. SVRIA staff had learned lessons from this first drill that will help inform and guide future drills in the county. The next areas where the drill will occur are in the Los Gatos, the Palo Alto areas, and across Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and Santa Clara. These cities form the West Cell. The final drill for late in the year will be the city of San Jose and Milpitas areas, known as the Central Cell. Eric Nickel, Executive Director.
All right, councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to give a big thanks to the chamber for the car show. I know councilmember Klein was out there volunteering, so thank you for that. Several of us attended. In visiting many of the businesses, one of the businesses shared with me that that event was... Caused the highest sales that they've had to date, so they were very appreciative of that event, and I hope that it continues because again, I think it's a benefit to our businesses, so, thank you.
Okay, since the last meeting, the Santa Clara Valley Water Joint Water Resources Committee met, together with SCRAW. Well, they're consecutive meetings, actually. And we just continue to work with Valley Water to figure out ways to increase the delivery capabilities for recycled water, including to Morgan Hill. We also had our... A VTA Board of Directors meeting. The excitement, though, at VTA right now is the groundbreaking for the light rail that goes to Eastridge, because that's been 20 years in the waiting, and there was an excellent video put out on that. And if you could just imagine, if we could ever get to something like that, going right down the middle of 101 all the way to Gilroy, so that those parked on 101 could see the travel going faster, that would sure be a feat. So, I'm looking forward to that one day. Okay, and I too attended, yeah, the GDBA Downtown Live, the first one of the season, as well as the car show, both just excellent events. All right.
Mayor, can I... Sorry, can I add something real quick? I just want to congratulate councilmember Bracco. He's now the chair of the SCRAW, so...
Okay, thank you. All right, consent calendar. Do we have any public comments on consent?
No, we don't.
All right. Do we have a public... No, public comment I just asked for. Does anybody want to pull anything? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to say moved by councilmember Klein, seconded by councilmember Bracco, to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yep.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. 7.1, award a three-year contract in an amount not to exceed $1,064,272 to CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance for traffic signal and streetlight maintenance and repair services. Again, this is for three years. Heba, Public Works Director, will give us this report.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, staff is requesting tonight your approval to award a three-year contract to CalWest for the maintenance of our traffic signals and streetlights. The city's Public Works Department oversees the operation and maintenance of signals, streetlights, and other structures. And as part of the five-year CIP budget that was approved by City Council on June 5, 2023, a project was established for signal and streetlight maintenance. The CIP budget allocated $1,064,272 using gas tax for the maintenance services for fiscal years '25, '26, and '27. The main scope covers the maintenance of our signals, RRFPs, streetlights, flashing beacons, VCOM signs, and other structures, in addition to the USA markings for streetlights and signals. This slide shows examples of the types of facilities and devices that are maintained under the current contract, and we're requesting that we continue with the maintenance under the future contract. The current contract will end at the end of June. That's why we started the bid process on May 6 of this year, with the proposals due by May 20 of this year. We received three proposals from San Francisco Electric, Bear Electric Solutions, and CalWest, with CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance Incorporated being the lowest bid. This slide shows the monthly and yearly bids that were proposed for the contract, and as we can see, CalWest is significantly lower for $148,920. However, this is the base bid. There are additional emergency repairs, as well as the purchase and replacement of equipment that gets damaged. This was part of the reason that the budget allocated annually is in the range of $300,000. For fiscal year '25, for example, it's $337,596 using gas tax, as I mentioned. This list identifies the different elements that are maintained, including 33 city signals, 11 Caltrans-owned signals, 18 red and yellow flashing beacons, and over 4,845 streetlights. And I should mention that the numbers will potentially increase this year because of the new devices that were in the process of installing. With that, we are requesting from City Council to award a three-year contract to CalWest with the potential for two years. contract to CalWest, uh, with the potential, uh, for two-year extensions. For the first three-year, um, the total amount will not exceed $1,064,272, and authorize the city administrator to execute, uh, the contract and associated documents. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Heba. Okay, I'm looking to council members, um, does anyone, Councilmember Tovar, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that report. Just, just curious, I mean, looking at, and you mentioned significant difference in the, in the, um, obviously the cost, or, um, how, how is CalWest able to offer the same exact services at a much lesser overall cost?
Uh, CalWest actually is the same, uh, uh, company that has been maintaining our signals and streetlights for the past five years. So they are quite familiar, uh, with the various systems, and, um, they, they have that advantage.
Okay, um, kind of, my next question is, have we looked into doing maybe a cost-benefit analysis to see if, um, you know, over a course of time, hiring staff would be less expensive than co- contracting out every time?
And no, we did not perform, uh, this cost-benefit, uh, analysis. Uh, what I can share with you is that we, we don't have any staff that currently have the expertise, uh, to maintain, uh, our signals and streetlights. We, we don't have electric engineers, we don't have, uh, this specialized electric technicians and so forth.
No, no, I, I understand that component of it, I'm just thinking if, you know, if we're paying this amount, you know, and continuing contracting out this large amount of money, wouldn't it be benefit, benefit us over the course of time to go out and find somebody and do that here? Just a thought. Okay, that's it.
Okay, I don't see anyone else on the board, but have I'd like to ask?
You don't see my name on there?
I don't. Nope, it's not on it.
Well, Fred asked my, yeah, Fred asked my question anyway, but.
Okay.
If I could just follow up on it. So there was no significant differences for the exact same services as the other bidders?
No, it's the same scope, and the evaluation criterias, uh, are the same for all proposals. It depends on, uh, the expertise of the company, it depends on the expertise of the assigned personnel, so it's not just the actual bid amount, uh, it's based on a number of factors that the panel evaluated.
Yeah, uh, but my question is, they will perform the same tasks and do the.
Exactly the same scope.
With the same amount of, uh, frequency? Okay.
Yes.
As the other bids?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask if we've been happy with the service that we've had for the last five years?
Yes, we have been, and we've received also positive feedback from the community. They have been very responsive for staff.
Thanks. Are they allowed to deal with the stoplights that are on Caltrans' right-of-ways, like on First Street? Can we call them to fix a stoplight on First Street, or no?
Uh, we have, uh, some, uh, under our maintenance, uh, agreement. Uh, as I'm, uh, shared in this table, uh, we have, I apologize, I'm looking for the slide, uh, we have 11 that's Caltrans-owned.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. Do you have a question? Yes, Councilmember Klein.
The fact that they're servicing Morgan Hill, like you said in the report, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, that helps them because they're already in the area, so it helps them be very competitive, but also they know our systems and they know what's involved in that, and that's always good, too.
Yes, and, and they are locally based, they, they are located in, in San Jose, so they're local.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this item?
No.
All right, then closing public comment and looking for a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to approve the motion.
Councilmember Brocco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Okay, under item eight, public hearings, we have none, so that brings us to unfinished business, 9.1. This is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy calling and giving notice of, on its own motion, the submission to the electors of the City of Gilroy. All right, it's for a quarter percent sales tax. Jimmy, go ahead and give the report.
There, there's gonna be a lot of long words and a lot of legalese here, so just, uh, we'll have time for questions, but, uh, I also have the, uh, Police and Fire Department here as well to answer the questions about this particular, uh, sales tax measure, which would add a .25, uh, public safety special transactions use tax. Uh, we, uh, we're, uh, in summary, uh, staff is proposing, based on council direction from April 8th, that we submo- submit to the registrar of voters a point zero, or 0.25 special transactions and use tax dedicated to funding public safety, including police, fire, safe, uh, police, fire, ambulance, and public safety infrastructure. If council approves this evening, staff will submit the documentation to the county registrar of voters to proceed with the ballot measure. On April 8th, staff presented, uh, the background as for the need and for what the city could possibly use for this sales tax, and so tonight, we are taking the second step, which is getting all of our legal documentation in order and all the council actions necessary in order to get this on the ballot and for it to legally qualify for a, uh, a tax. Uh, we have talked numerous times about our staffing levels and, uh, seeing how we are, have started to build back our staff, including in the public safety area, uh, we are still very much behind, and the gentleman asked earlier about, you know, building houses and, and things like that, they, they do not provide enough tax base for, uh, additional services, they just, it's just mathematically, it doesn't pan out, but, you know, people have to have somewhere to live, so we understand that. Uh, so this is really a question for the, the residents of Gilroy if they want to pay this additional tax for increased services. Uh, at this point, we have identified no other way to fund additional services rather than deleting, eliminating, cutting other services, and so, uh, that did not seem to be the desire of council, and it is not the recommendation of staff as well. Uh, all of these pieces, all these departments, um, compete for funds, and public safety is the largest part of the city's budget. Uh, it is perhaps the highest priority of cities in general, uh, in their operations, but there is also a point where you have to identify how you're gonna keep paying for it, as it is, it is quite costly, you know, in, in all cities. Uh, one interesting aspect about this transaction use tax, and if you're not familiar, I'm sure you know what a transaction tacki- tax is, because you buy goods and services, but a use tax is basically, let's say you buy something out of state and you have it delivered to your home, you have to pay the use tax in, um, of where it's delivered. So if you buy something in, uh, Amazon out of Nevada, they deliver it to your house, that's a use tax, but it's kind of the same concept. Uh, one of the reasons why sales tax, use taxes are usually pretty, um, you know, they're, they're okay, or they're desirable by communities because the cost is shared by visitors, and an analysis of our sales tax states that about 50% of our sales and use tax is generated by those not living in Gilroy, and so those who live out in the county, or maybe in Morgan Hill, go to Costco, uh, they're paying that tax for Gilroy's services, so it's a, it's a tax that is not completely borne by the residents, uh, just those who do their shopping Uh, over the years, we've seen a, it's, a, a large increase in public safety expenditures, uh, but we've also seen calls for services, and we don't focus so much on the number of calls, we have seen the number grow up, but it's the complexity of the calls. Uh, a lot of, um, requirements of our public safety focus is much more complex, much, uh, longer service time on a call than many years ago, and so they do get tied up a long time for calls, and with the county ambulance issues, uh, our medics are having to provide some of those services, which then takes them out of calls, and just plain and simple, we need more people. And so, uh, the city's conducted previous staffings in, in years past for police and fire, and the most recent ones adjusted for, uh, 2024, saw that we need about 15 more positions in police and probably 17 in fire. Uh, those are numbers that will never be realized in our current budget, it just, it just will not pen, pen out. And then, uh, there's, even if you were to reallocate all of your other public, or your, your general fund monies, like recreation and parks, it still wouldn't be enough money, so you could cut all those departments and you still would find yourself needing more resources to, uh, to staff a growing city. Analysis of a transactions and use tax, who pays for this? It's, it's paid by residences, businesses, and visitors, and the sales tax is exempt from what they consider the basic needs and necessities of living, which is, uh, food and medicine and, and things like that, so it tends to have a less impact on the lower income because there's less discretionary, um, revenue for the lower income, so they, if they're struggling to pay for groceries and medicine, that, they're not gonna realize this tax because it's not assessed on those types of items. Uh, the impact on the business community is seen very low, .25% is, is really not a lot compared to when you see one cent full, one cent sales taxes in other areas, and then it's paid by the purchasers, so it, it's added on to what they're already, they're paying. Uh, the revenue projection is anywhere from 4.1 to 4.5 million dollars annually, and, uh, for all of our ballot measure language, and we went with just kind of a nice round number of 4.5 million, uh, to give the voters and to give the community a sense about how much, uh, this could generate. Uh, the ballot measure itself is a special tax that requires two-thirds vote of the electorate voting on the matter for approval, and it'll be applied to sales tax, transu- transactions and use of goods purchased from outside and delivered inside Gilroy, that's the use part. Again, I mentioned groceries and prescription medications don't qualify, and the tax would be paid by purchases of goods, whether they're in, whether Gilroy residents or not. Uh, the rate is, uh, the .25% is all we have legally left in our ability, uh, for sales and use tax, uh, the over 9% that's already being paid, I mean, much of that goes to transportation measures, uh, to the local Bradley Burns Sales Tax, uh, allotment, but this is the most that we can use if, uh, without going to the legislature, there is no higher number that we could do. Uh, we are recommending the .25, but we are also, uh, spent considerable time looking at other ballot measures that were successful, uh, and, and primarily, public safety sales tax measures that were successful, so we, we did include a lot of these provisions that we think will help the voters, um, have more confidence in voting for this, and so there is a proposal for a seven-person citizens oversight committee and annual audits to help ensure that funding is spent within the restrictions. We had a similar committee for the library bonds as well, and, uh, that committee still does occasionally meet, uh, but not as much due to the bonds being pretty much done. And that, that committee, this seven-person oversight committee, would be made of, uh, seven individuals, each appointed by one council member, and then that individual would stay on as long as that council member was a member, and if we had a new council member through election or retirement or whatever, the new council member could appoint somebody to that committee as well to oversee, uh, the use of this sales tax. I'm gonna start getting into the little bit of the more, um, technical language, uh, these are not the words that we created, but we, we have consulted, and we have, uh, worked with the registrar of voters and, uh, other cities that have done this, and so the language is, has been, has been create, we haven't, we didn't create this ourselves, we replicated other successful places. And the actual ballot question, as we are proposing, is to generate funding that cannot be seized by the state, but stays in Gilroy and is dedicated to public safety, police, fire, and ambulance services, and public safety infrastructure projects. Shall Gilroy enact a quarter-cent transactions and use tax and include a citizen oversight committee and annual audits for the tax? So that is the language that we're proposing that would be on the November ballot. Uh, there's three different types of documents we're going to ask you to approve this evening, or at least understand that these are coming. The resolution that is on your, on your agenda authorizes the tax ballot measure question and adopting ordinance to be placed on the ballot for voters, so that gives staff the okay to go ahead. Uh, the ordinance is also included in your language, and that is required in order for you to actually assess the tax if it's successful during the ballot measure, and that's adopted by the council, but the voters have to approve your authority to, uh, adopt the ordinance. And it codifies the detailed terms of the tax, also lists what the tax can be used for, what it can't be used for, and, uh, all those limitations on allowed uses. The last document that occurs after the election and after the ordinance is called the Implementation Plan, and that's where the council has the ability not to change how the tax is used, but how it's implemented, and that includes various percentages that the council wants to use in the budget, say one year we need a new, uh, fire substation, it's gonna be $3 million. The council would have the ability that year to use $3 million of the $5 million one time to do that project, so it allows council, uh, with the oversight committee, to have some flexibility, if one year we're adding a lot of staff, the next year we need a lot of vehicles, uh, to have some kind of ability to adjust, uh, within those confines of the ballot measure language. It does, uh, the Implementation Plan discusses the structure and more guidance on the oversight committee, and also determines the relative share of tax revenue each department will receive, police, fire, and public safety, uh, infrastructure. Relative share can change amongst the three, but may not fund anything outside of the allowable uses that's in the ballot measure. The ordinance, uh, specified for public safety services, equipment, and infrastructure, and the ordinance that is approved, uh, by council after the approval of the voters, uh, requires the Implementation Plan that actually shows how you're going to spend the money annually, so if you have 4.5 million, it goes dollar by dollar about what the council is gonna approve for that spending, and the oversight committee, uh, will have a, you know, a advi- advisory role and also an auditing role to make sure that staff indeed did spend the money as was appropriated. Non-supplanting restriction, uh, we do get this question a lot, well, you're gonna get 4.5 million, that means you're gonna cut two out of the budget, and you're, we actually have a, a language in there that does not allow us to do that, so we'll have a baseline of what the current spending, what level was for, uh, public safety, and, uh, this money on this ballot measure would also go to its own fund as well, it would not be mixed with general fund dollars, and so it would be very clear and actually quite easy to see how much comes in and how much goes out, uh, so it won't be commingled, per se. Provides modification in the event of a fiscal emergency or disaster, and, uh, would require two-thirds of council to modify the Implementation Plan, but that's only, uh, for that amount itself, the 4.5 million, and, uh, that gives, again, council some flexibility depending on, uh, emergencies or disasters. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the election procedures, and Beth can answer some of these questions if you need help, this is not my, my strong area here, but I'll, I'll read what we have. Uh, submission of ballot arguments. So the city council may authorize members of their own city council to write a argument in favor of the ballot measure as to why it's so necessary, or why the, the council believes it's so important that the voters approve this. Uh, that's a 300 words in length and no more than five signatures, so only five council members can sign it, that's the rules. Uh, then, the council can direct an impartial analysis, and typically that is done by the city's city attorney, and the city attorney would produce and submit a maximum of 500 words analyzing the tax, which in this instance is, you know, quite simple, that, these are not, um, unusual taxes, and, uh, the analysis will tell the voters about what the restrictions are and what, what, as a legal attorney, uh, feels about the language that we've written. And then council can also have a rebuttal argument if somebody has written an, uh, argument against the measure. Uh, sometimes that does happen, and then, uh, as the proponents of the measure, the city gets the opportunity for the last rebuttal. Uh, those are all things that we'll walk through and how, as we go through our recommendations step by step, as the, as the council directs, and that's a maximum of 250 words. Okay, discussion of recommendations. Should council determine to proceed, draft resolution assumes the following direction, which may be modified by council before adoption. We're gonna ask the council to authorize the city council to submit a ballot argument in favor of the measure, direct the city clerk to send the measure to the city attorney's office for development of the impartial analysis, and authorize the city council to submit a rebuttal argument in favor of the measure. And then I'm gonna leave the recommendations in order so we can go through those, but we'll, we'll get to that in just a second. Uh, the outreach, it's very important that we do let council know that city staff is very limited on what we can do, uh, but we are able to produce educational, uh, documents that simply is facts, like this measure will generate 4.5 million, this measure is going to fund X, Y, and Z staff projects, but we can't advocate, you know, that we're gonna cut your services, or you should vote on this, that's not what staff is able to do. Uh, there are others in the community that we would look for to really advocate if they, uh, support this measure. Uh, so if this is approved this inning, this evening, uh, the next steps is that we would submit the measure to the return, uh, the registrar of voters for the November 5th ballot, and then the additional steps, if directed, including arguments, impartial analysis, and rebuttal arguments. Fiscal impact. To put this on the ballot, we did just recently get a reg- a registrar of voters estimate for 81,290, that number could go up or down depending on how many other measures go on the ballot, so if you get a, a flood of measures, and we've heard a few from some cities, we would share in those costs, and it would lower, but that's, that's what we're expecting the cost to be. Implementation, there is a one-time setup fee to the state if the measure passes to get it, all the administrative, uh, parts going for this tax, and then there's an ongoing administration, which is about 1.75% of all the revenues that does go back to the state to administer. As we mentioned before, uh, generates about 4.1 to 4.7 million annually, and to give you some context, uh, the fiscal year 25 public safety general fund budget for police and fire, uh, was about $4.75 million annually. police and fire was about 46, 47 million dollars. This is going to increase that funding by about 10%, which is a, is a lot of money. So, okay. I'm going to, before we get into the direction, I'm going to pause, take all your questions, and then if council wishes to proceed at that point, we'll walk through. I think we have six recommendations that you'll have to take one by one to ensure that we're complying with the legal rules for ballot measure. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, so let's start with that. Okay, Councilmember Tovar, let me get on to my.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, thank you for this report. Kind of looking at the additional positions that, you know, we would like to obviously have, and I know what the budget is, but what, what is the cost for those additional positions overall annually?
Well, it depends on, you know, if you're a police officer, firefighter, anywhere from 200 to 300,000 annually is what each position costs. So we, you know, we've determined that if you have four to five million in one year, you would be actually able to do 15 to 20 positions if you just did staffing that year. Now, that's ongoing, so it may eat up some of your infrastructure money. But the implementation plan is, and the oversight committee really gets to kind of work through those details, but that's kind of the general number.
So, so the 4.5 million that we would gain from this annually would be enough to staff us at that higher level?
Yes.
Good. In addition to that, have we, you know, I'm kind of looking the good and the bad, obviously. Have we looked at what other alternatives, you know, we may take if this tax measure doesn't pass, or is this the only option that we're looking at?
This right now is our, our litmus test, and I, I'm kind of been thinking that it's not so much a pass fail, it's more of a community survey. And so if it doesn't pass, where are we at today? And probably not much better off in the future. It would be very difficult to add staff.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Arminderis.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. You mentioned that staff is limited, right, because of FPPC rules and such about how much time they could dedicate, or what kind of questions they can answer and information they can share. Would a informational community town hall, would those be allowed where staff is to answer questions?
Sure, and I'm happy to do that. I see my role and staff, if we get invited by the chamber, says, Jimmy, can you come talk about the ballot measure? I'm allowed to do that as long as I don't advocate for it. And I can do the same thing in a town hall meeting as well, where the educational piece is entirely okay.
The city can host those?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Jimmy, what's your estimate of the total cost if we're going to do mailings and stuff?
We are not most likely going to do mailings, because we didn't, when we told council when we first started this, we were not going to really spend a lot of money doing surveys and such. So we may do a mailing as part of the e-newsletter. If we do do a pamphlet, it would be very simple. I think the cost of that would be pretty minimal, but we will not have a large campaign other than our, our informational piece, because we can't send out anything advocating for it. And you can only tell people, you know, the educational piece so many times.
Okay, and I found it interesting that it has ambulances in there. Why? The county provides them?
They do, and they're not technically part of the fire department or the police department. They are a different contract that gets administered, so we didn't, we didn't want to get, what we're trying to stop is getting trapped. And so if you get too general of labels and something goes outside of that label, the ballot measure language will actually not allow you to, to fund those things. So ambulance was in there, we learned that from other communities as well. Depending on the contract, like right now, the county's having a horrible time with their ambulance contract. They could change providers, they could change methods, and we didn't want the funding to be left out of that.
And then on the, like the firehouses needing to be retrofitted and, and purchase of equipment and stuff, were we looked at using our reserves for that? You know, do one fire station, then let them build up again, then do the next one?
We did, as the last budget, we did some use of reserves. We did, I believe, 1 million per fire station for retrogrades. The kind of level that we're looking at is significant, would probably be outside of the use of reserves, but the nice thing we could do is we could actually sell bonds with this revenue to finance it over several years.
And how much are we talking to do one of the fire stations?
I, I'd say probably four to five million. It's all, it's getting to the point where it's almost close to just bulldozing it, building another one, but it's very disruptive.
Okay, I have some questions. I don't see anybody else on my board. I'm going to, and my questions are very much along the same lines of what's already been asked, but I'm going to first start with what one of our speakers was alluding to earlier. Can you tell, tell us, tell the public why the city of Gilroy cannot keep all of the property tax generated from the homes that are in Gilroy?
Sure. Property tax is primarily for funding of schools, and so 50% of every property tax dollar you spend goes to the K through 12 and the junior college, community college system. The county gets about 18% of your property tax, and then the city gets about 14%. So that does not go far compared to what you're paying overall, but most of your taxes go to schools.
Yeah, our, right, our property taxes don't stay here. People think that we get a much larger chunk of property taxes than we do. Our sales taxes, well, even that, I mean, if the sales tax we all pay, which is right now 9.125, we don't get all of that.
We get 1%.
Exactly. We get 1% of that, and this quarter percent would come all to us. So it's the same thing with sales tax. People maybe don't realize that. So it's, and this, what we're talking about here to pay for our public safety is what we're funding today through the general fund. And the general fund only gets our share of property tax and sales tax, which isn't as much as a lot of people think. Okay, so going to the numbers, again, similar to what everyone else was asking, I'm using the four and a half million, right? We're estimating about four and a half million may come from this. And I can already, I can do the math, which is what's, in the implementation plan that we have, that we're considering tonight, 40% of that four and a half million would be allocated to the very specific five items that it says under law enforcement, 35% to the very specific five, four, or five items that are, or six items, that are under firefighting paramedics, wildfire risks, blah, blah, and then 25% to public safety infrastructure. So if you do that math, and we think we're going to get four and a half million dollars per year, that's 1.8 million for law enforcement, 1.575 for fire, right, and 1.125 for the infrastructure. What I'm getting at is have, have we thought through how many people, I mean, that, that doesn't amount to a lot of people. You started out this presentation saying we need 15 here and 17 there, and I only see us getting six, six possible police bodies, and maybe seven firefighters, depending on, on how the money comes out. And if you do that, that's, that's something you need every year. If you're hiring a body, you need to pay that salary every year. So it's not like the next year that money's going to free up for something else. So I'm just trying to, you know, in full transparency and understanding what we're getting here, I too absolutely believe that we need this money. I know that it's not sitting someplace else. I know that if the voters decide against something like this, and that means in order to change our level of service, we do have to take it from another department somewhere. That's the only other answer. I mean, unless money just falls from the sky with sales tax on its own. So what I'm saying is, it's not a heck of a, I mean, if we're going to use a, a chunk, you know, for something big, we, we really can't afford. I just want to be real. We really won't be able to afford at this level of money much more than 10 bodies combined with police and fire. Am I looking at this correctly?
No, you are looking at it correctly, and we want to be really careful too with the residents. This is not the perfect solution. This is not going to fix everything, but what it will do is a couple of things. We've, we've struggled to, to fund the third fire station. This will help. This will take care of that. We also know that the city's growing and we need other services in the area, so it's going to help with the growth, but it will not, it's not the, the magic wand that fixes everything. The one piece about the infrastructure that we really tried to make a goal is that having a bond issued for the infrastructure, which is having a sales tax dedicated to it, is a very attractive bond. So let's say you need 10 million dollars in, in repairs to all the fire stations and what have you, and you do that bond 20, 25 years, you're looking at about 300, $400,000 in annual debt service payment. That freezes up even more money to add additional staff. So if we get a little creative, and we try to leverage, you know, a sales tax, we can, we can make it stretch even further.
Yeah, thank you. I understand. I just wanted to put some numbers to what, realistically, what this, what this would mean. Okay, do you want to continue with your report? This is not for public comment yet, right?
Oh, I would suggest if the council would like to go ahead and do public comment, because all we have left is to go through the recommendations, which, that'll be your work.
Okay, then I see four, is that correct? Okay, so Jim Wyatt, Jeff McMahon, Ron Kirkish, and Robert Cepeda, in that order, if you could all be prepared to, to come up, and you each have three minutes. Go ahead, Chief, she's got it running.
Yes, thank you. Well, first, thank you so much for having me up here. It's an honor again to, to speak to you, and I, now I'm speaking to you as a longtime resident of Gilroy, not just the former fire chief. But I do want to mention specifically this, I strongly endorse this measure. I do not see, having sat in the seat for three and a half years, any way to fund the fire department the way it should be funded. And I'm going to just say also the police department as well. But let me just say specifically, this, this will increase our service delivery to the community. It will also increase firefighter safety. And I'll just say, last year in August, we had temperatures that exceeded 105 degrees, two firefighters went down, and we did not have the resources to back them up. And anytime that we put our firefighters in a situation where they are utilizing every single resource as possible to put out the fire or to handle our day-to-day emergencies, we also run the risk that they're going to get injured. And having an increase in fire personnel will increase their safety, not just the service delivery, but I have to say, both of those go hand in hand. Let me also add that the fire department needs three specific areas, and Jimmy's already alluded to it. We need staffing, we need the Santa Teresa Station built, and we need to have our apparatus replaced. We have aging facilities, our Chestnut Station, our Los Enema Station, they're hitting 50 years now, and they need a facelift, a seismic facelift, a remodeled facelift. Our apparatus, unfortunately, we've been riding on borrowed time, and it's time to go back to the safety aspect of our apparatus lasting only 20 years, not just 25 years, that we've been, that we've, that we did before, based on our low call volume back, back 10 years ago, moved in that direction. I see only have 30 seconds, but let me just wrap it up. I'll just say that this tax ballot measure, as much as it might sound painful to some, it is absolutely essential if we're going to provide the fire services that this community deserves, and also the ambulance services that this community deserves. It is the fire department ambulance that has been bridging the gap that the county cannot, and they haven't been able to, and I'm just telling you, I project in the next three years, they still won't be able to. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff McMahon?
I think it was Jeff McPhail.
Oh, it says McMahon, sorry. It says McMahon on here.
My apologies. First, I just wanted to say, thank you to City Administrator Jimmy Forbes and staff for even looking into the tax measure and even being able to place it onto the ballot measure. I too am speaking as a citizen, but also for the Gilroy Firefighters Association to endorse the recommendation to put the tax measure on the ballot for November 5th. What this would allow us in the fire department is some flexibility to handle not only the day-to-day emergencies, but also when we have medium to large-scale emergencies, less reliability on auto and mutual aid, and us being able to handle our emergencies more internally and using auto and mutual aid resources only for these extended, large-scale incidents. What it would do for our firefighters is give us the ability to, like Chief Wyatt said, is allow us to have ability to train and flexibility to bring up a new recruit status up to the point to where they're able to hit the road full speed. And then lastly, as a, for, to answer, answer Councilmember Bracco's question about representation or even mailers to the community, our local would be committed to doing any community outreach, any mailers, any informational meetings with community groups that we could by all means speak on the betterment of what the tax measure would do for our communities. So that being said, I appreciate council members' work, and yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, Mr. McMahon, I know. I know who you are. I thought there was another Jeff here. Sorry. Okay, Ron Kirkish.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one thing that wasn't mentioned was that 70% of the money will be captured from outside, not, not within Gilroy. Citizens that shop here, shop at the outlets and stuff like that. That's huge. The other thing that Jimmy said, I was going to say is, is we can borrow against this money once it gets approved. It's an excellent idea. We can get whatever money we want from the bank in, for, and pay it off in the future, but we can use it right now. Building a, a new firehouse, getting a new fire truck, a ladder truck, those things that happen immediately, and yet, and with this, if this thing passes, it would, we would be able to pay it off over time. So I, I am encouraged by it. I think it's a good idea. I will vote for it myself, but in all, in all likelihood, in all, by all rights, the citizens of Gilroy deserve to be able to make a choice on this, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cepeda?
Good evening. I didn't decide to say. Yeah, so I, I'll be honest, I'm learning a lot of things right now. I wasn't aware that not all of our money goes to Gilroy. And, you know, I have a lot of respect for, you know, firefighters, police officers, just anyone that works publicly, you know, they, without them, you know, we wouldn't have what we have. That being said, I still have a strong opinion on this, and I would, I would vote no. I feel like we can allocate the funds somewhere else that to, you know, I know the county, you know, does a lot of wasteful spending. I, I would assume that this, a council does, really evaluates all, where all the, the funds go, and, you know, this, this is the issue when it comes to like a top-down, you know, system, you know, really should be, where does this come from the bottom? And so that's why, you know, if we can figure out something that's more beneficial, more wholesome, that can help, you know, not just firefighters, but yeah, also, you know, you know, local businesses, stuff like that, you know, because they will contribute to this too as well, you know, through their, they will be taxed and all that. So, yeah, I'm learning a lot. This is not something that you learn in, in high school. They tell you, oh, yeah, you're gonna, you know, who pays for all this? Oh, taxpayers, but, you know, they don't go down to the brass tacks, you know? So, you know, I wish more people were here, especially younger people, to learn all this. But yeah, my opinion on this is no. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Felios?
I'm just going to follow up. I strongly support what Ron said. Just give us the opportunity. What I'm understanding tonight, again, we can, the time will come for us to discuss the pros and cons of this measure. And so that, just, what your, what your duty is tonight is to just let us, let the community vote on this. Give us the opportunity, okay? Yeah, we, well, yeah, I know how I'm going to vote, I'm, I'm for it, and everybody else, but that's not what I hear. What you're here to do is to give us the opportunity. So please, this is the right thing to do. Let the community vote on this, let the community have some say in this. That's, that's very simple, you know? I strongly support what Ron said. Just give us the opportunity. That's, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria? Okay, no, I know this should say Aguilar, but it doesn't, so go ahead. It's okay. You guys have to write more clearly for city clerk.
I just wanted clarification when you come back to speak on whether this bond measure will take care of the overtime that we have for firefighters. Is that still going to be that high amount that we're paying, or is that going to be a replacement by hiring new people?
Thank you. Okay. All right. Any other public speakers? I don't see any. Okay, so closing public comment, and do we want to continue with discussion before we move on to this? Does any, do any council members, like I, yes, Councilmember Klein, let's, let's have some more discussion and then we'll proceed. more discussion and then we'll proceed.
Well, I know this is a conversation that we're having with the community about a very important issue, which is public safety, and it's always come down to money and funding. This is very specific with accountability built in. I have always been a skeptic when it comes to ballot measures, but in this case, I support the idea of engaging the community and letting them decide what they want with all the information. So, I'm for this.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Armendaras?
Thank you, and I think Dion's trying to, it's not a letting.
Okay, I'll have, go after Councilmember Armendaras.
Yeah, I think, I think Maria had a good question. What do we foresee in terms of a reduction in overtime and like injuries? Because I know Mr. McPhail, and then you also, Jimmy, mentioned the safety aspect of it, right? And there's not just financial, but the safety aspect in terms of what it, I think it was Chief, yeah, Chief Wyatt saying that there is a need in terms of manpower, right? How, what a relief that is for the workload of firefighters during calls.
There's absolutely no doubt about that, Mr. Armendaras. Having a larger force and a deeper bench allows people to not be as worked, not to, you know, to be able to recover, and so we would expect that the overtime would go down, we would expect that we would have fewer people out injured. Again, just the rest and the relief that I think some of our folks could get would be well-served by more firefighters and police officers.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, we all are sensitive to that, right? We've all been seeing that overtime budget, and we all know that the reason it's been as high as it is is because we don't have the deployable, enough deployable firefighters. Okay, go ahead and continue, oh, Councilmember Bracco, sorry.
Yeah, I think this is a waste of $81,000. I don't believe it stands a chance of passing, just like the last time we tried this, it didn't pass. And, you know, I was speaking as a business owner, this, we did some math, it'll probably add $3,000 to $5,000 a year that I have to pay. I don't think that's fair. And it causes business to shop around, buy stuff out of San Benito County or another county where you save money. You know, I have trucks that cost a million dollars, so a quarter cent, it adds up when you're purchasing those kind of things. You know, my fuel bill is over $10,000 a month. All that adds up, you know? I have two, we buy two small tow trucks a year. This will add about $1,000 to the price. So, I can't support this, and I think it's, we're wasting money out of the general fund to support it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. I would disagree with those comments, but obviously, I don't think it's a waste of time, I think it's something that's needed, and I never thought I'd ever agree with Mr. Kirkish, but I do, thank you for your comments. I think it's something that's important and it's needed, so I would be voting in favor of this, and when ready, I'm ready to make a motion.
No, we still have another part of the, right, discussion to do. I would just like to clarify for the public, since Councilmember Bracco was referring to the City of Gilroy having done this before, yes, Measure F, like Frank, was in 2014. It needed a two-thirds vote, like this one does.
No, it needed 50%.
No, first, it needed a two-thirds vote, as they were, that's what they were trying to do, to make it specific to public safety. It still needed two-thirds vote even back then to be specific to public safety, but because the polling showed that that wasn't likely to pass, the then-city council, on which I know you sat, changed it to be not specific to public safety, so that we'd only need 50% to pass, and then it didn't even get 50%. So, we are talking tonight about keeping it at the required two-thirds, so either the voters are going to say, yes, we want you to do something now about our public safety service levels, or, no, we do not, or, yes, we do, but not with a tax, take it out from another department, whatever that is, but.
And there is a difference.
Letting the voters say that, though, is the thing.
Thank you. Yeah, and one of our speakers, one of our residents, mentioned that, right, they deserve the right to vote on it, for the voters to decide, and I think whether, when it comes down to a few thousand dollars, the safety of our, of our community, of all of our residents, right, not just us as individuals or as business owners, what have you, like, it's more importantly about the safety of every resident in our community getting adequate, you know, and timely safety from our public, our public safety officers and firefighters. But the other thing is that, in the difference between something happening in 2014 and something happening now, is that in this particular year, is that there is a difference in voting trends, there is a difference in voting during off-year election and voting during a presidential election year. There's a different demographic, and voters are always more likely to pass bond measures and sales taxes and other taxes during presidential elections. You have a different profile of a voter, and they're more apt to passing these things. So, I support this for all those reasons.
And we have a larger population.
Right.
That we're trying to serve, yes.
And again, I thank the association for their willingness to kind of send out mailers, because I think one of the questions asked in the very beginning when Jimmy was doing his presentation is, what's the alternatives outside of this here, right? We don't have one, this is it here.
Well, taking out from other departments.
No, I understand that, right, but that's, there's an effect if that happens, but I think the importance of, again, us getting the word out there and speaking in terms of what it's about is going to be very important, right? Because I agree, again, that if it does not pass, then we're going to have to pull from somewhere else, and obviously, that's loss of jobs, so I'm hoping that's not going to happen, I'm hoping that, again, that we'll be able to pass this, so.
Yeah, and there was something else I wanted to say, a comment that was made too, someone talked about wasteful spending, and whether or not there's wasteful spending is always in the eye of the beholder, but certainly, we have discretionary spending where we put money. Now, what we're talking about here with public safety is essential city services, so if this measure doesn't pass, and we don't want to keep our service levels the way they are today, then it is discretionary spending that you look to. So, that's, you know, first, so, okay, so we just need to do a good job of explaining that to people so that they are well-informed when they're making their decisions on the ballot. Okay, Jimmy, go ahead, I think.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have Bryce walk you through each one, and then if you could help facilitate the resolution to A, B, C, D, E.
Very good.
Yes. So, Mayor and Council, the recommendations are designed to flow to a decision on the resolution, and three of the items on here are asking for counsel for discussion consideration, basically direction about certain authorizations in that resolution. So, the argument in favor of the ballot measure, the rebuttal argument, as well as impartial analysis, all has to be contained in the resolution that council adopts in order to be able to be placed into the ballot and proceed. And so the first recommendation we have is discussion consideration, which is taking place. The second recommendation is for council discussion consideration, whether to authorize the city council or any member or members of the city council to submit an argument in favor of the city measure. The third recommendation is for council discussion consideration, whether to direct the city clerk to transmit a copy to the city attorney's office in order to prepare the impartial analysis. And then the fourth is for council discussion consideration of whether to permit rebuttal arguments to be placed. That leads up to the fifth, which is if council wishes to proceed with public safety dedicated special transaction use tax, then adopting the resolution with any modifications that come from those first three recommendations. And the final one is council review and providing direction regarding the draft implementation plan that's not being adopted tonight. It's based just a first look, and then will, if, depending on the actions and success of the ballot, then it will come back to council for adoption at that point in time. So with that, we can begin, if it's the mayor's pleasure, with the discussion on whether any argument in favor will be authorized in the resolution.
Okay, so I am asking council members to either raise their hand or put their names on the board, if you have an opinion on this. When we, at the last election in 2022, if you recall, we did submit an explanation in the ballot, which I think we need to here too, I do, when we were trying to do the design build. So, does anybody have a reason not, or does anybody object to putting in, okay? And so then, what do we need to know? Who writes it? Or is that not, are we not there yet?
Not yet, so this is just being put into the actual resolution to take the adoption. Who writes it can be decided afterwards.
Okay, so we all agree that we want to put it in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the second item then is the impartial analysis, if we want to authorize the city attorney to prepare that.
Okay. It's probably recommended to, no, I think we're just giving direction so that that comes back, right? Yes?
Yes.
How much does that cost, Andy? You're adding, you're upping the bill.
I'm part of that 81,000.
Yeah, are you part of the 81?
No, I don't think so, actually. As far as I know, these, you always see impartial analyses by city attorneys, I thought it was sort of a normal thing.
So that means it's included with what we already pay you?
There you go.
Okay.
Two thumbs up, man. Hard to get off that subject.
Okay, so I think we're all a yes on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the final of the considerations is whether to allow the submission of rebuttal argument in favor of the ballot measure.
Yeah, I think we would want that final word, if we need to, right?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the next one is if council wishes to proceed with public safety dedicated special transaction use tax, adopt with any modifications, it's been decided already, as may be directed by council, a resolution of city council, the City of Gilroy calling and giving notice of, on its own motion, the submission to the electors of the City of Gilroy at a special municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election on November 5th, 2024, a ballot measure proposal to add a 0.25% dedicated public safety special transaction use tax.
Yes, everybody who's planning to support, yes.
Well, this is, this one will take an actual action.
Oh.
A motion, sorry. This is the only one on.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Roll call them.
Okay, so, it was Councilmember Tovar, and seconded by Councilmember Armendaras. Thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes.
Six, one, right, six, one.
And then the final recommendation is if there's any, so we included in the packet the draft implementation plan, we're happy to receive any responses or any feedback at this point in time if council has it. Again, this is not the only time, it's coming back to council, it will come back again at least once, maybe twice, assuming, if it's approved at the ballot box.
Yeah. When that, do we need, I'm sorry, that was a motion for that, too?
If there's no, no motion, just if there's any comments at this point in time in the implementation.
Yeah, does anyone have any comments? No. No, that, it included the whole oversight committee thing was, is part of the implementation plan too, as are the percentages, the amounts that go to each department, right? Okay. I think we're all good with that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude this agenda item? Wow, okay. Get back to my agenda. Okay, thank you, everybody who came out to discuss this. Okay, that brings us to 10.1, new business, psychiatric emergency response team, justice and mental health collaboration program. Chief Espinoza will give us this report.
Madam Mayor, members of council and the community, this is an information report and really an enhancement to our partnership with the county, and particularly the behavioral health services department. And these types of calls are challenging, and they are becoming more frequent in the last couple of years. And they actually had deployed a mobile crisis response team to South County that had supplemented our ability to tackle some of these cases. Now, this program is a model that's been deployed at some municipalities in the county, and it first developed in the City of San Diego, where we'll actually house a clinician here at the police department. So this model is a joint response model comprised of a clinician and a police officer. We don't have a full-time assigned pert officer, but we are planning to embed the clinician in our current community engagement team, particularly our quality of life officers that seem to encounter most of these cases when they're out there on duty. The model involves the responding in real time to crisis situation, and certainly, when you have someone with that level of expertise, your ability to de-escalate in these cases that are not criminal in nature affords us to peaceful resolutions in most of these cases. Purpose is divert individuals to a community-based treatment and reduce hospitalization incarceration as appropriate, and to prevent future encounters with law enforcement. Again, most of these calls are not criminal in nature, and some of them occupy a significant amount of time as we try to de-escalate and try to conclude the call for service with a peaceful resolution. Another goal of the PERT program is to improve our knowledge, and this clinician will also serve as a conduit to that education and the conduit to all the services at the county level. So we will utilize that clinician to train our own folks internally as well. This is what the model looks like. The clinician will be embedded in the community engagement team with real-time response with a police radio issued by the department, and access to all the electronic health reports, which we don't have access to. Obviously, they'll do that by means of their own department-issue laptops, and they will conduct mental health evaluations, assist in determining appropriate calls disposition, and write the actual 72-hour holds as prescribed by the Health and Safety Code. They will consult with the officers regarding de-escalation strategies and tactics, and conversely, we will teach the clinician some of the tactics that we employ that we have found to be successful. And they would further provide those wraparound services or recommendations or referrals to ensure that linkage with those resources that we, as police officers, don't have access to. And as the pert officer, the patrol officer will be in a modified uniform and in an unmarked car, and we, as law enforcement officers, will have a little bit more intelligence, particularly if we're responding to a residence, we will be able to determine whether or not if any of those occupants have access to firearms through our databases, and in turn, share that information with the clinician. We will provide safety for the clinician, the clients and the community, and coordinate transportation to an identified level of care. Consult with the on-scene officer, clinician, regarding de-escalation strategies and tactics, again, and responsible for their safety on that scene. These are the services that are provided via this model. Rapid crisis response for the imminent emergencies, again, those calls that come in that someone is barricaded and want to hurt themselves or kill themselves, not criminal in nature, not against the law to kill yourself, but again, it puts us in a position where we have to invest the time to try to mitigate and come to a peaceful resolution. They will provide mental health evaluations and assessments of individuals and families, crisis intervention, de-escalation, and safety planning, threat mitigation, crisis hostage negotiation support, and that's more on the crisis communication angle. Referral, resource linkage, and coordination of care, that post-care that we don't tend to be involved with once we place someone on a 72-hour hold. Providing coordinated transportation of individuals to most appropriate level of care and at post-crisis follow-up. These are the populations that we are hoping to serve, primarily all adults over the age of 18, but no one's going to be left behind if someone is under the age of 18 and in imminent risk, we will do whatever we possibly can to coordinate resources for that person. The GPD PERT team consists of one officer and one clinician. That is a goal to eventually have a permanent PERT officer, but in the interim, in the meantime, while we roll this program out, they're going to be embedded in our community engagement team. The GPD PERT operates, again, in an unmarked vehicle, and officers will wear modified uniforms, and we will issue the clinician an identifying vest, I would say clinician, both to the front and to the rear. How these calls are going to come in, they're going to come in like they usually do in our 24-hour dispatch center, and whether it's a crisis-type of response, and then we would plan accordingly and respond accordingly with a clinician. You know, certainly, it's one clinician, so they're not going to be available 24/7, but again, when we have that person in-house, we would develop a model that all department members could utilize when they're dealing with these type of crimes. Also, law enforcement officers, their partners could refer to this clinician or consult with the PERT clinician, and we may get the referrals from community members and service providers as well. This is a criteria, PERT will respond to acute psychiatric emergencies that require law enforcement response, again, those incidents where there is threats, threats of violence that a clinician would not be. not be in a position to respond to without the safety equipment. They will also respond to non-emergency welfare checks on a case-by-case basis. Those, we often deal with the same folks repeatedly in the community and we don't have that post-call-for-service ability to make that referral and ensure there's some sort of, of case follow-up. So they would be able to do that. They will serve as police department's main point of contact and the conduit to the county and all the resources that could be available for them. This is, even though this type of model is employed in several communities throughout the state, we have to figure out what is best suited for our community here. So, once this is deployed, you know, certainly we could tweak and we could modify to ensure that it's, it's providing that enhanced level of service to the community here. The model, the PERT model, clinician will be a complement, again, to our community engagement team and serving as a conduit to behavioral health services and post-crisis support to reduce the need for future encounters. These are the agencies that are currently deploying this model, the Sheriff's Office, Santa Clara, San Jose, Palo Alto, Morgan Hill and us. We have, we have participated, supervisor of a community engagement team, in interviewing six candidates. You know, like anything else, it all depends whether or not they are willing to take the job. Most of these clinicians that go to school want to be in an office, behind a desk and not necessarily out in the trenches. So that is the challenge, but the goal is to have someone here in the next couple of months. We also are going to develop our internal protocol as to when to utilize the PERT team so that everyone in our department is consistent. And we're also going to participate in the onboarding of the clinician, their training, and conversely, we will have our team be trained by them. We are in the final stages of finalizing the MOU and so it's actually a real exciting time because we, this has been a goal of our department for the last three, four years and we're very close to having it come to fruition. And so that is where we're at now. We wanted to deliver that to you so that you're aware and once we do a soft rollout, we will make sure the community is aware as well. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, chief. Council member Rocco?
Chief, will the officer be like a special officer that does this or will the clinician go with any officer that's available?
No, they're going to have the two-point officers. And so there is a PERT training that they will all have to go to and usually, San Diego PD facilitates that and it's free. And so they, they're going to have a two-point officer that they're going to work with all the time.
So will we have this availability twenty-four hours a day?
No. It won't be, the clinician's not going to be here twenty-four hours a day, but the post-resource offering will be.
That good?
Yeah, and the referrals will be available twenty-four hours a day. Yeah.
Council member Armandares?
My questions are on those same lines in terms of hours. Have, is there hours considered best practice hours that other, that these other teams or other folks that use PERT have found?
Yeah, you know, I think the first, the first point of business, if, you know, to be honest, would be to get them in the door. And so I don't want to use the word entice, but you know, we want to make sure that there's a schedule that's going to work for them and then we will do some metrics, you know, where, what hours are we typically getting these calls? And then we'll do some modification. But in the, in the interim, because they are an employee of the Santa Clara County, we will start with four days.
Okay, and then I noticed in the report that the peer linkage team is not established yet, is there a timeline as to when it will be?
It is not established yet. That, that, that function is being picked up by the PERT clinician and I think once we get the clinicians in place, we will be able to get the peer linkage resources.
In-house?
Yeah, no, that goes to the county.
From that staff person, okay.
Yes.
That's all, thank you. So this is, I don't see anybody else on my board, so I'm going to ask my questions. This is a program we do not yet have, right?
I'm sorry, mayor.
We don't yet have this program.
Right.
We're developing it.
Yes.
And this is a way to better respond to those with mental health issues that we currently are not able to respond to, right?
Folks that are in crisis that we are responding to, but now you have someone with the clinical expertise.
Right.
With, who is an employee of behavioral health that have access to all the resources and is a, in essence, a civilian.
So what I'm wondering is, does, will this in any way involve our quality of life officers?
Yes, they'll be, they'll be involved in that team.
They'll be involved in that team?
Yes, they'll be embedded into, the community engagement team is the quality of life officers and the SROs.
Okay.
And so they will be with the quality of life officers.
So we're just, we're going to be able to add somebody from behavioral health?
Yes.
That's the add here. I know there's, I'm just going to use an example because it's just the one I'm familiar with at Saint Mary's Church regularly. There is one, sometimes two individuals, but one in particular. And I'm, I assume you're familiar with that, too? Is this the very kind of thing that this will be able to address?
Yes.
Because I know that, that church is beside itself with what to do.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And there's been some new changes to, to the actual statute. SB 43 changed what a gravely, the definition of a gravely disabled, which added substance abuse in there. But they have to be diagnosed with severe substance abuse disease.
But over, the overriding definition is that they are unable to take care of themselves
Unable to care for themselves.
And can even harm thems, yeah, causing harm or something, okay, right. Okay, I'm going to go to public comment because I see one on the board. Okay, Greg Felias?
This is a great opportunity for, I love the word collaboration, I love the word cooperating together. This is an opportunity to bring in a professional to help us out. You'll see on Neighborhood Watch, there's a lot of discussions on homeless. This is an opportunity to address the issues that the people are worried about with the homeless. There's a lot of people and a lot of civilians are worried about the homeless. This is a great opportunity that to work with a professional, having somebody that can actually, that can help us out and, and deal with this problem. So please support, and please, in whatever way you can support, and let people know that, hey, look, when this, once this program begins, make sure you let people know that this is, this is what is going, let civilians know that, hey, look, this is what we have, this is a, a program that we have, this is a service that we offer. So please support this program and let people know that this is happening. Thank you.
All right, any other public speakers? All right, closing public comment. This is, just received report, is there any direction you're hoping for?
No, no direction. The final comment is that this, the fiscal impact is minimal. Per the MOU, we would have to buy them a vest and a radio, but they're our employee of the county.
And they're not charging us to recover that cost?
They're not charging us.
To recover that cost, okay, yeah, no, that's great. All right, everybody? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. 10.2 is adopt a resolution setting the 2024 fireworks service fee for impacts on city fire and police services related to the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks pursuant to Gilroy City Code, Chapter 10A. Sharon, you're going to give us this report.
Yes.
Okay.
Given you, mayor, council members and members of the community, as the mayor mentioned, tonight we have the 2024 fireworks service fee for your consideration and adoption. Pursuant to the Gilroy City Code, Section 10A.8, the fireworks service fee is to be determined every year by the city's fire chief and police chief and is adopted by the council resolution every year. The amount from this fee is intended to help provide cost recovery for augmented staffing in police, fire and emergency medical services related to the use of fireworks during the July 4th period. And it's also for the city to conduct education and awareness campaigns regarding the safe and sane, responsible use of safe and sane fireworks and to reduce the use of illegal and dangerous fireworks or the illegal use of safe and sane fireworks during the July 4th period. The fireworks service fee is to be paid by the Safe and Sane Fireworks Vendor, which is TNT Fireworks. The city code established a limit of up to sixteen booth permits for nonprofit organizations and in 2024, there are fourteen fireworks booth permits. And the Safe and Sane Fireworks will be sold to Gilroy residents from July 1st through the 4th per our ordinance. The fireworks service fee is separate and different from the booth permit application fee. This booth permit application fee covers the permitting, inspection of the booth and also for the posting of the fireworks prohibited posters. Now here we'll take a look at Assembly Bill AB 1403, which became effective January 1st this year. This bill is focused on safe and sane fireworks. It also provides the new guidance regarding public safety, fireworks enforcement and fireworks funding. AB 1403 allows the city to charge a fee to help offset the actual and reasonable costs incurred by a city for the things you see on the slides, permitting, inspection of fireworks stands, public education and awareness campaigns on fireworks safety, enforcing the provisions of your city code and fire operation and fire suppression efforts that are directly related to safe and sane fireworks. The bill also states that the prorata share of the cost may not exceed seven percent of the gross sales of the fireworks sold in the city during the applicable period. A cost recovering ordinance or resolution in effect on or before January 1st, 2024 may supersede provision, that's stated in the, in the bill as well. And this bill has basically modified the methodology for which the fireworks service fee is calculated for this year. So next slide, this is where we'll show that. So this year, our calculation leads us to recommend a fee of $27,804.69. And this will help offset, as I mentioned, the actual and reasonable cost of public safety staff overtime during this July 4th period and the fireworks public education. So on this slide, you see the breakdown among the departments and in your packet in Exhibit A, you can see more details there. Among the several intentions of AB 1403, it is to limit the fees that can be assessed for fireworks mitigation services. So for this year, staff recommends using the productive overtime hourly rate and the staff effort is still consistent, pretty consistent, similar to prior years. And as far as public education, if you look in Exhibit A, you'll see the breakdown and that includes fireworks prohibited posters, the Facebook posts, utility built inserts in both mail format and electronic format in both English and Spanish. So for comparison, the last three, looking at the last three years, the fireworks service fee averaged $50,471 and it ranged between $42,627 to $56,887. So because of this bill, Safe and Sane Fireworks will be reevaluated in the future and further research will be conducted by staff and fireworks vendor may be required to submit detailed documentation of actual retail sales of safe and sane fireworks. And but for this year, you know, this is the recommended methodology and staff will be conducting more search, research in the several, next several months. So here's staff recommendations to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy, setting the 2024 fireworks service fee for impacts on city fire and police services related to the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks pursuant to Gilroy City Code, Chapter 10A. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, I know I have questions, I don't see anyone on the board. Am I missing anybody? Okay, then let me go ahead and ask mine. Sharon, how much do we spend for augmented staffing, meaning the additional, what we staff up because of the whole Fourth of July thing?
Yeah. If we're to, were to focus on safe and sane, which is what this bill is focused on.
No, I'm asking how much, I'm not talking about safe and sane at all. I'm, I'm asking what, do you know what I'm asking, Jimmy? You want to answer that? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I asked the police chief today and the, the only cost that we track related to fireworks enforcement is the addition of twelve officers on Fourth of July, which is about $20,000 to $25,000.
Okay.
And a lot of their calls are responding to fireworks, but the calls are kind of commingled with lots of other different activities, so we don't have a clear answer of exactly how much we spent on the fireworks.
But we staff up for just the Fourth of July or for July 1st through the 4th?
I think for police, we do for just the Fourth of July, but for fire, I believe that we have staffed during that time depending on the violent threat because the illegal fireworks is a lot of times what causes.
Yes, I understand and that's where I'm, that's where I'm going with this, is that we, we spend a certain amount of money because of the illegal fireworks that are out there and I mean, it could also be that a safe and sane is in an illegal location, you know, that causes it, but I understand that it's, it is not the safe and sane that cause our problems, it's the other. But we're spent, whatever we're spending, these fees are, are somewhat offsetting it, right? Is that, isn't that how we look at this?
Well, this fee is focused on the staff overtime related to fireworks activities for safe and sane fireworks and the public education that's focused on that. But the public education part does also include the illegal fireworks.
Okay, this $27,800, which is the suggested fireworks service fee, is this not because of the state law that says we have the maximum of seven percent? Is, is there no connection between the two?
Yeah, so the change this year is on the hourly rate due to the state law. The staff time in terms of hours, that's pretty similar to last year. That's where, you know, all the department staff from all these.
For a number of hours.
Departments, correct, have already estimated the time they spend. So that has not really changed, but this year because of the new bill.
The rate is lower.
The rate, yes.
Yes.
We discussed finance, with finance department, rather than using the fully burden rate, they suggest to use this productive overtime hourly rate, which is more of a straight overtime rate.
And is in compliance with the state law that was effective.
Yes, in discussion with the city attorney's office also. This is what we believe meets the intent of the law.
Okay, so do we or do we not know if we spend at least that much in, in augmented staffing?
We, we don't, we are, we are spending $27,000 in augmented staffing and public outreach for safe and sane activities. We are not permitted, according to the city bill, to co-mingle what, like offsetting illegal fireworks enforcement by the safe and sane dollars.
I understand, right, I understand what that means, right.
But if you're asking me for a number that we spend on illegal fireworks, we do not have that number and we do have to track it.
Right. No, I was just trying to think through how this number, even at its reduced amount from what used to be our average of $50,000, is, is still very helpful, right? Which, it's money we wouldn't get at all if we didn't have safe and sane fireworks, right? That, that, right? Without safe and sane fireworks, we wouldn't get, we'd have zero.
We would have, correct.
Right, we'd have zero.
In the prior years, those were based on the fully burden rates.
Yes.
So, yeah, this year's that methodology changed, this is the hourly rate.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was my question. I guess I'll go to public comment if council members don't have questions. Any, I don't see any on my board, any? All right, then closing public comment and that brings it back to the council. Oh, maybe I'll ask one other thing. What, what did you mean before, since we made a motion yet? What, what did it mean by we might be reevaluating safe and sane fire, reevaluating what? Safe and sane fireworks will be reevaluated?
Captain, depending on council feedback and this further research we'll conduct, it might be, you know, council might want to consider if we still continue to allow that in the future.
Safe and sane fireworks?
Correct, safe and sane fireworks.
Because how does that contribute to our cost problem? It doesn't, right?
Because it's not the fully burden rate and, you know, if you look at my last bullet point, we might also be looking at, we're trying to kind of, you know, get all the data we can this year after July 4th and then evaluate all of this. And we may be asking the fireworks vendor to provide detailed documentation to show the actual retail sales of safe and sane fireworks and see what seven percent of that, you know, would be. And then look at the actual fully burden cost.
Because we don't ask for that documentation from them now, right? So we don't know.
Correct, we do not have that.
It's self-reported?
It's not.
Or no, it's not even considered, right? Not in this formula?
No.
Okay, got it.
That's correct.
So is, I mean, there's no, is there a change? This is confusing me now, because this, we're supposed to be just talking about this fee.
Correct.
Right? This fee, this fee that because of state law, we cannot charge, we cannot charge the vendor what we've been charging them, right? We had to change the rate. Hours are the same, but we changed the rate. And this $27,800 that used to be $50,000 something is now in accordance with state law, and it's still higher than the zero we would get without safe and sane.
Correct.
And it is still the case.
Correct.
That the augmented staffing, the money that we have to spend because of fireworks is going towards the illegal fireworks, not legal fireworks. Not the safe, the safe and sane are not the ones that we need this money for, right?
No, I mean, this is all for the patrolling, the overtime patrolling that staff is doing due to fireworks.
Exactly, right. And in those years of patrolling, the issues have been around the illegal fireworks, illegal use of fireworks, right?
It's a combination of all of those. Yeah, but the bill is very specific to focus on safe and sane fireworks.
Okay.
I think what they're doing is they're saying, they got to patrol to regulate the safe stuff, but they can't say what they're really planning. Is the money, they're going to use it for the unsafe stuff.
Right.
You can't, but you can't charge the safe and sane people for.
It's not their.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't say that, but when you put in the report that safe and sane fireworks will be reevaluated, then that just makes me ask, are we saying that there's a problem with the safe and sane fireworks? Because that has never been the case in the, since I've been sitting on this dais. And so if something has changed, I would like to know that.
But that would be up to us, right, whether we direct staff to reevaluate it?
Absolutely. I was just asking what she, what staff means by that, since we're here discussing this, and that statement is in there.
Well, I kind of interpret to mean that, and I'm not saying to get rid of the safe and sane, but I think they mean if you did not have any legal fireworks in the city of Gilroy, and fireworks were going off, then they would know exactly where it was coming from, and so they would be more focused on the illegal. Does that make sense?
Well, so the patrolling, yeah, of the whole city, that will include also the illegal use of safe and sane fireworks, dangerous use of safe and sane fireworks. So that's why it's, you know, a lot of combination of activities, but we do, we have to conduct this safety patrol around the whole city, and that's how the hours, you know, the staff time was derived.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to reduce this fee.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously, and brings us to 10.3. Approve the Third Amendment to Agreement with the City of Morgan Hill for Providing Staff Services for the Implementation of Stormwater Permitting Requirements in Environmental Services. Heba.
Good evening. This agenda items, I have no PowerPoint presentation for it. This agenda items recommends council approval of the Third Amendment to our agreement with the City of Morgan Hill that provide us with staff support for environmental services. This agreement was first established and approved by council on March 16 of 2015, and it has since been amended twice for extending the term of the agreement and for amending the overall budget. Under this Third Amendment, staff is recommending, is extending the agreement that will end at the end of this June, to extend it through fiscal year 25. And this agreement is different than an agreement with a contractor, for example, where we would have access to various staff and various functions. Under this agreement, we will have the service of two-thirds of dedicated environmental coordinator who's experienced with stormwater requirements and reporting, and one quarter of the environmental services manager who's experienced with SP 1383 and the various mandates for the different types of waste and the various agreements with the county. So we're targeting specific functions to meet requirements and mandates in the near term. I should mention that the Public Works Department does not have specialized environmental staff. With the help of the Human Resources Department, we're in the process of recruiting for environmental program coordinator. So in the meantime, until this person join us, and in addition to a period of overlap for coordination and training, we're requesting approval of this amendment to the agreement. For fiscal year 25, the request for the associated funding would be $1,700, $178,542, which would be funded through the staff savings from the salary savings for fiscal year 24 within the Public Works Department. With that, we, our staff is recommending council approval of the Third Amendment to Agreement with City of Morgan Hill for Providing Staff Services for the Implementation of Stormwater Permitting Requirements in Environmental Services, and authorization to the city administrator to execute the amendment and related documents, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Heba. Are there any questions, councilmembers? Seeing none, do we have anybody wanting to speak?
No public speakers.
Closing public comment.
Move.
Second.
All right, moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Klein, I think that's what I heard first. Okay.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that was unanimous. Yes, thank you, Heba. Thank you. Okay, under item 11, we have none. 12, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of summer updates from our Recreation Department. With school out, there are over 650 campers registered in over 50 summer camps, and we also have over 1,000 youth registered for swim lessons over at Christopher High School, so very, very active summer, pre-pandemic level of activity as well. And then lastly, just a little bit of notice that the Gilroy Museum has seen an uptick in visitors of about 11%, and already 400 people have come to the museum this year. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. City attorneys' reports.
I have a brief update on a case I reported to you a few months ago, which is called Make UC a Good Neighbor versus the Regents of University of California. This is the case about the People's Park in Berkeley, where the university passed a plan to make a dormitory there, and the opponents, who, of course, people have been fighting this since 1969, I think, but in any event, the opponents challenged the EIR that was done on the basis that an EIR, environmental impact was caused and was not analyzed by loud student parties. So they said that noise caused by the occupants of the dormitory should be considered an environmental impact and therefore had to be analyzed in an EIR. The appellate court agreed with that. I told you when I reported this, more out of amusement, although it could have impacts for any project that we might also consider. I said I thought it was wrong. The legislature agreed, and they immediately passed an emergency law, I mean, an urgency ordinance, urgency statute, that overruled the case. But the second part of the report is just to let you know that this is how litigation works. Even though the legislature specifically overruled the case, the plaintiffs kept litigating it, and it got all the way to the California Supreme Court, and it was just reported the other day. So there was months and months, and many, many dollars spent litigating it, and the California Supreme Court said, well, the legislature's overruled this, we agree, which is the obvious common sense result that should have obtained, but because of the litigation process, it took an awful lot of effort and expense to get there. Anyway, that concludes my report. So we don't have to worry about loud student parties, so that's the good news.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do you want to take us into closed session?
Sure. Okay, closed session, item 14.1, Conference Real Property Negotiator pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495, 6.8, Gilroy Code 17A8. Properties, 10th Street Bridge, APNs are listed on the agenda item. Thomas Lucesse Bridge, APNs are also listed. New Fire Station, APNs are listed. Negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, city administrator. Other party is John Felice, Glanloma Corporation. Under negotiation is price and terms of payment. So the procedure now is to take public comment, if any, then adjourn to closed session, and then in closed session, we must take a vote to stay in closed session. That vote is a reportable action.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, then I'd like to adjourn in acknowledgment of Juneteenth, that's this Wednesday, okay? And then we'll take a five-minute break, and then come back. Close session. It's eight o'clock, so 8:05, everyone, by that clock.